The meeting of April 11th, 2022 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Bradley?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Prohaska?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Sancy?
Here.
Whitman?
Here.
Let's start with the part of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on March 14th and the work session on March 29th, 2022, as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on March 14th and the work session on March 29th, 2022, as submitted. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So that brings us to board salutes. I believe there are some board salutes out there.
Sure, I have one. I'll start. I have a board salute that goes out to Eagle Scout candidate Jacob Blanchard, a junior at Hempstead High School who recently constructed and donated 28 PVC displays for Lincoln Elementary School. It'll support the school's building plan as part of his Eagle Scout project. The displays will be used by staff to increase visibility of learning targets, syllabi, and class expectations throughout the school. Thank you, Jacob, for this outstanding project and his commitment to bettering our schools.
Thank you.
And I have a board salute that goes out to all of our preschool staff, our district early childhood team, and the students and families currently in preschool as we recognize last week's celebration of the Week of the Young Child. Around us in the boardroom tonight, you'll see works of art created by our youngest students. These works of art are a testament to the important work that occurs across our district and throughout our community with our free four-year-old preschool partners to engage our youngest students in foundational learning that is so critical to their development. We are fortunate to live in a community that is so dedicated to learning at such an early age, and our district has a long history of excellence in preschool programming. So thanks to all of our preschool teachers, our coordinators, and especially our kudos kiddos, excuse me. I'm reading on the paper, our kiddos and our preschool teams and their partners.
Thank you.
I'm delighted to offer a salute and a bravo to Megan Schumacher, the director and the entire production staff and students of the Washington Middle School for a spectacular performance of The Wizard of Oz last weekend. I attended Friday night, and I was just amazed. It was an incredible production. Roughly 150 students are actively involved. 150, that's nearly a fourth of their students at Washington. And there are two casts, so lots of opportunities for more kids to be involved that way. It was just powerfully well done, from the music to the sets to the lighting to the choreography, the staging, all the technical aspects. It was just outstanding. It was really a strong tribute to the visual and performing arts program at Washington. So it approached a professional level of quality as far as I was concerned, and it was just a joy to see it. So bravo, well done.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have one. So huge shout out to like all the PTOs throughout our district. I had the opportunity to connect with two parents specifically, one at Jefferson Middle School and one who's here today at Fulton Elementary. And the things that parents do behind the scenes that we don't often get to see to make sure that teachers and students have a great experience, it's amazing. So big shout out to the PTOs, and I hope eventually we'll have some members come up here and share some of the good work so that way all of us, board members, can know what's going on. So again, Jefferson and Fulton PTO, thank you so much for the work that you do.
Thank you. I've got another one. A big board salute goes to Roosevelt Principal Jeff Joel, who was recently named the 2022 Outstanding Administrator of the Year by Iowa Bandmasters Association. Jeff was nominated by Roosevelt instrumental music teacher Daniel Norman, and the award is given for displaying exemplary traits of leadership that support the growth and success of Roosevelt's band program, students, director, and community. Congratulations to Jeff on this honor. Lots of good salutes tonight. Good job, everybody. Good job, district. So that brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is a public hearing on the proposed budget estimate for fiscal year 2022 to 2023. Going to hand it over to Mr. Kelleher.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Rheingans. Tonight, the district is asking you to approve the budget and accompanying levy rate for the 22-23 school year. As part of that work, we put together a booklet called the Certified Budget Proposal. We do this annually, and tonight I'm just going to take a little time to go through some of the pages for, as we went through it a little more in depth at our subcommittee meeting, and I think if anyone in the public wants to view that or know more in depth than what we talk about tonight, please contact Mike Seis, and he can hopefully get you a copy of that. So we went into a little more depth than we're going to go to through tonight. But first, I'd like to start with the message from the superintendent. Sadly, this will be the last one from Superintendent Rheingans, but we eagerly await the next one for next year coming from Superintendent Hawkins. So good news and bad news on the same message. Now I'm going to flip to page one of that document. And just as a brief overview, this really gives you an example of all the different funds that are included in the Certified Budget Proposal. It shows the revenue from the prior year and what makes up or is included in each of those funding sources, as well as examples of some of the expenses that are paid from those funds. And what I want to, I guess, enforce tonight is to show that all of these are kind of different funding silos, and funds are not allowed to be moved from one silo to the other. It's kind of illegal to do that, so we have to use those funds that we get for certain purposes, and we can't move them around. And that'll be evident later on when we talk about efficiencies. We can spend dollars out of the operating fund or general fund for salaries and benefits, but other funds we can't. So like our save money, we have to use for capital projects. So there's silos, they're within that funding stream, and they can't be moved over into another funding stream. So let's go to the next page, please. Page four. And on this shows, I wanted to show this for the public to see as well, is this is a graph of our certified enrollment going back, I think it's about 10 years. If you look at 2014, that was kind of the peak of the enrollment in the last 10 years at 10,633 students. You can see how many we counted this past October, 10,120. That's over a 500 student decline since 2014. And again, that comes into discussions later on that we have, the declining in enrollment. And we're actually looking at probably a slight decline for the upcoming, next October's count as well. So let's flip the page to page five. That is a graph on the bottom left that talks about our SSA, or supplementary state aid, that the state approves each year. You can see going back several years, it was 4% pretty regularly. And if you extended this time back even further, it was almost consistently 4%. Now, in recent years, it's ranged from 4% down into 1%. There was even a year that it was zero. This past year, it was approved at 2.5%. So what does that mean? That means it takes the state district cost per pupil and increases it by that percentage. So that's in our general fund formula for funding. Keep in mind, 2.5% is substantially lower than the 7% or higher current CPI. So as we're having to pay for supplies at 7% higher, we're only receiving funds at 2.5% from last year. So there's creating a little deficit in those areas. Okay, if you would please go to page 11. One, two of the graphs I want to show here. First is the history of our levy rate, and this goes back around 15 years. You can see it was pretty high around $17 level for several years, and then it started to decline, went up a little bit, and now we're on another downward trend. You ask why is it headed downward? Why are we lowering the levy rate? Has to do with three factors. First of all, our decline in certified enrollment. That is multiplied by the cost per pupil that I talked about a little bit earlier. So if you were to compare two years, I'll compare next year and this current year, between the decrease in enrollment and the increase in SSA, the supplemental aid, those virtually come to the same number when multiplied together. However, the state is picking up the biggest portion of that increase for the state SSA. So that pool of money has stayed the same from year to year, okay? State has picked up a little bit more money, so that has lowered the amount of property taxes coming in. And again, because general fund's formula, it's formula-driven by law, we have to lower that levy rate because that little piece of property taxes has gotten smaller, plus the evaluations of everyone's houses went up this past year, and I'll show that in a little bit. So you combine all those factors, that is the reason we have a 64% decrease in the levy rate, because the levy rate is mostly made up of the general fund. It includes the Pebble Fund and the Management Fund, but those two remain relatively stable even year to year. Okay, if you would go down to the graph. We put a comparison just to show where our levy rate is compared to last year's UEN rates. We don't have all of the other UENS at the point when we put this document together, but I think it shows a comparison of where we are compared to the other urban educations, the larger cities in Dubuque, in the state of Iowa. So you can say we are near the bottom of that table. Okay, if you would go to the next page. So this is what we're asking you to approve. This is what was published in the paper. It's the budget for all of the funds that the district has to budget for, so it's not just the general fund. It includes multiple other funds with the accompanying levy rate set at the bottom, the $13.91 for next year. So what does that levy rate mean to the taxpayer? So we'll concentrate on that top section. So what this does, it takes the average annual, or average property value in the city of Dubuque, and we compare it year after year. You can see there was an equalization order that raised values for this upcoming school year. It went up about 1.8%. You ask why did that take place? The main reason for that is it's based on the sales of houses in the community. And as we all know, houses have been selling very quickly, and at prices much higher than what a lot of sellers have been even asking for. So as that price escalates, the county is mandated to match that in our valuations. So that's why you see an increase in the valuations across the city. Next comes the rollback number. Now that actually went down a little bit from the prior year, so that's good for us because what the rollback does, it takes the valuation, multiplies it by the rollback to come up with the taxable valuation, not the assessed valuation. The taxable valuation is what the levy rate is applied to, okay? So that went down a little bit. So now if we scroll down a little bit further and we plug in our new levy rate for the upcoming year, you can see the difference on the average property value house from last year to this year. They're actually going to be paying a little over a buck less than they did last year. So hopefully everyone's excited about that news. We haven't seen that in a long, long time, that the rate from one year to the next, the actual dollars amount paid by taxpayers has gone down. So that's good news. And we have some other types of property listed below, and those were really the big winners of us lowering the levy rate because that impacted them even more than the residential property. That's all I have for you tonight, unless you have any questions for me.
Just so people understand, it's confusing, the way they do it, especially when we have the conversation as to why we have to do what we have to do when it comes to budget. We can't collect more money than we're allowed to spend, that is, the state is telling us. So it's pretty much saying, we're not going to keep growing this huge account and keep collecting dollars that we are legally not allowed to spend. Would that be a good way of summing that up?
That is correct. On our general fund, we can, there are limitations, and we are actually, the levy rate for the general fund is at the cap. It can go no higher.
Right. And the state sets that cap.
Correct.
And it just says, and it's because the state doesn't, you know, they set the percentage, so that's all we can spend on that. I mean, it's so confusing, the why they do it when we keep going around. It's like we're going around in circles as to why we have to do this, but our hands are tied by what the state tells us to do, and it's wrong for us to just keep collecting taxpayer dollars that we can't spend. So it's better for the taxpayers to be able to keep their money.
And if things continue, I expect, especially with all the scenarios that are taking place, the decline in enrollment continues, continued lower SSA, and houses continue to sell at the margins that they're selling at, you know, the future probably looks like a decline, don't quote me on it, but it looks like a decline in the levy rate in the future as well. With all those factors being the same, that's the only outcome that can take place.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
I move the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the budget estimate and authorized payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the budget estimate and authorized payment of legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Now it's open for public comments on this issue.
Yes, so a lot of folks here not probably here to talk about the budget. There's a public comments right after this that would pertain to all other issues. So if you want to talk about Kevin's presentation, by all means come up, but if you're here for another reason, that'll be in just a couple of minutes.
Seeing none. I move the Board of Education adopt the budget estimate for fiscal 2022-2023 as published. Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the budget estimate for fiscal year 2022 to 2023 as published. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That moves us to visitors and open forum. I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Anybody who wishes to address the board can do so at this time. We ask that you come up to the microphone, state your full name and your connection to the district, and limit your comments to three minutes. We have a handy timer to count down your time.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Kathy Brimeyer, and two of my children currently attend Fulton Elementary School as first and second graders, and my youngest is set to start preschool in the fall. I started the Fulton School Parent Teacher Organization, or PTO, in the spring of 2019, and it is called the Fulton Family Group. I am currently the president of the Fulton Family Group. My family and I deeply, are deeply committed to Fulton School and the neighborhood it resides in. My family and I are deeply saddened to hear that Fulton School may close at the end of this school year. We love Fulton. We love the students and their families and all of the amazing teachers and staff at Fulton Elementary School. I have attended quite a few school board meetings, and what I've heard and seen in the many PowerPoint presentations is that there is not enough money to keep Fulton open. Knowing how much Fulton means to my family and countless other families in my neighborhood, it is deeply frustrating and upsetting to know that there is not enough money to keep our school open. It is also deeply frustrating and upsetting to find this information out at the end of March. This timeframe does not give Fulton students, families, and staff enough time to process all that's happening and plan a celebration at the end of the school year, but while also figuring out what next school year will look like for our children and for staff members. Will we as a school and a neighborhood rally together and process our collective grief, our collective grief, and plan an amazing end of year and school closing celebration? The long and the short of it is yes, because we are steam team strong. For future school closures, please give families and staff more time to process and plan. I recommend school closures to be announced no later than January. I recommend this timeframe to give students and families enough time to process all that's happening and to not have to scramble in the last few weeks of the school year to plan for the following school year. I also want to bring attention to the fact that with Fulton School most likely closing at the end of the school year and the main playground in our neighborhood, Comiskey Park, scheduled to be under a tremendous amount of construction this summer, I beseech the school board to keep the Fulton School playground open so neighborhood kids will have a fun and a safe way to play outside. I implore the school board to work with the city of Dubuque to make sure that there are lights for basketball playing at the Fulton School's playground so neighborhood basketball games can still happen on warm summer nights. We are a community that looks out for one another, and I urge the school district to continue to think about how to use its resources to make Dubuque and all its neighborhoods equitable for every district student. In addition, I urge the school board and the district HR department to work mightily to ensure every Fulton staff member, especially Fulton paraprofessionals, are equally, an equally fulfilling position somewhere in the school district. Please fight fiercely for Fulton Paris, since there is currently no union fighting on their behalf. Fulton School is truly an amazing school because of the fantastic leadership Principal Chris Nugent gives to all of the incredible Fulton teachers and staff. Thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you.
My name is Cale McCormick. I am the physical education teacher at Fulton Elementary. Fulton has been my home now for six years. I love it at Fulton. I struggle to imagine myself anywhere else. And I guess when I look back on where I've been and how far I've come, I can honestly say that Fulton has saved my teaching career. Fulton has taught me a lot. Fulton has taught me that there is so much more to teaching than just standing in front of a classroom and giving lessons. We've had to build relationships on a completely different level. Our staff at Fulton has been a rock for each and every one of these kids, and sometimes what children need most is a place full of people who just care about them and not just a place with standard instructional format, with instructions and completing homework. I look around the room here, sorry, this is hard. I look around the room here, and I'm not the only one. There's others in this room just like me who have given years of not just time, but years of their lives to make sure that our kids at Fulton get the care that they need and the love that they deserve. I've taught in four different schools, and I can tell you that I'm not lying when I say that the relationships our teachers and staff have with our kids at Fulton are unlike any other. Anderson, you've seen it, you've been in our building just as much as anybody else, and you've seen us do work, and I would imagine that you would not have a problem saying something Fulton is just different. I never got hugs in the hallway until I started working at Fulton. I can't go anywhere in the building without getting at least one real genuine hug from a student along the way. If a class passes me in the hallway, I'm not allowed to move on until I've given all 17 kids in that class a high five. Fulton is just as much, just as much a part of me as it is to our kids. We're a staple in the lives of these children. I know that we say we'll be able to provide these services to the kids wherever they go in the district, and I don't doubt that, but I think we can all agree that there's a really big difference between the students getting the services and us providing them. Fulton is a place that's unlike any other. Our kids genuinely love us, and not the same as when kids say, I love my teacher. These kids literally love us with all of their little hearts. If I miss a day of work, I hear about it for a week. They're upset. They're upset with me for being gone. They miss me, and I'm sure other teachers in this room would say the same thing. When we approach breaks or extended periods of time where our kids will not be at school, they often get upset. They don't want to spend a week to 10 days away from us because of uncertainties or just because they want to be around us. I'm not here to say that closing Fulton is like removing a place that's like a second home, because that's not what it's like. Closing Fulton is closing a place that is home. Thank you for your time.
I am a mother of two kids that go to Fulton. I have an adult son that also went to Fulton. And when I, it's a-
Could you state your name?
I'm sorry, my name is Candy Harris. And yes, to some it may seem like just a school. It's more than a school. It's a safe place. It's home for our kids. My 19-year-old went there, had a wonderful teacher. And then my daughter, who was in kindergarten a few years ago, had the same teacher, and they both got to experience her as a wonderful, wonderful, caring teacher. But my daughter didn't understand that one week she had a teacher and the next week she didn't. But as Fulton, they came together and they dealt with everything so wonderfully. Now, everything that everybody else tells, I can concur to, but my concern is also safety. When these children have to go to another school and it's less than two miles away, there are safety concerns. There are busy streets, there are busy intersections. How are these small little children supposed to walk across these intersections and get to another school? That is a safety concern. So we can go on about how amazing a family we are, because we are, and we're Fulton Strong, and we'll always be Fulton Strong, but there's concerns, not just in the winter when it's cold, but generally that is a safety concern to have to be under two miles and have these little children walking to school. I seriously urge you to reconsider this, not only because this is a place that the kids feel at home and feel like they are protected there, and I'm not saying they're not going to be at another school, but the connection there is, unless you really experience it, you just, it's undescribable. It's like they're another parent, they're another loved one, they're another aunt. It's a family, it's a love, it's a bond. I know, you know, it's all, we get it's a budget thing, but for us, it's a concern for the children, for the children who also disruption in any bit of their structure is devastating to them. And yes, they may get that care at another school, but we know we have it now. And at the, just a few weeks left of school, you're expecting us to just be picking another school. It's not picking another school. This is a place that we trust and we know that if our child is having a horrible day and they're having a moment where they just sit on the floor because they don't want to go, we know they're going to take care of it. Thank you, please reconsider.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Gillis, and I wasn't going to say anything, but I'm a para at Fulton, and I've been there for about six years. So I just wanted to bring up a couple of points. First of all, our principal, Chris Nugent, has worked at Fulton for many years, as you know, and with our population, and just her expertise- know, and with our population and just her expertise. And the staff at our school have worked with these children for years and I think become quite expert at really helping them. And so I would like to make sure that that transfers to other schools that these kids are going to. I don't know, you know, about the schools I've been at Fulton so long myself, but one of my concerns is do they have the same level of education in trauma care that we get at Fulton, everybody gets at Fulton? That, that, that care is going to follow them to other schools. And then another concern I have is families in our community have, struggle with transportation at times. So if their student, if they live by Fulton and their student is at Prescott and their student has an open house, they maybe won't go. Their student has a concert, well, their student can't come. They can't come because they simply can't get them there, not that they're not trying, not that they don't care, but their situation is stuff that that can't happen. I know at Fulton, we have kiddos that for certain reasons cannot get to school. Maybe they're two blocks away, but for certain reasons, they're not going to get there. Well, we now have a bus, thankfully, the district has worked out so that after it drops off kids, it goes back around and it picks up these kids that couldn't get there, that weren't on the bus. I have a student in my class who that happened to. He missed a lot of school. Halfway through the year, he was one of the bottom kids in the class, not because he couldn't learn, but because he wasn't there. This bus started and he is moving right on up. He's learned his letters, all of these things because that need was met for our students. And Mr. Stribling works with the kids so much, Natalie Mitchell, and really helps our families in a very non-condemning way, not saying, "Why aren't your kids at school?" Get your kids, they say, "How can we help you? I'll come to your house and I'll walk your kid to school for you." Whatever it takes to help the students. And I'm just concerned that that follows them where they go. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Just if I could for the audience, so on the agenda, now we'll go into a couple of other items and then we'll back under new, is when we'll talk about Fulton as the board. So just know we heard what you said and then we'll come back around. So I know board meetings are not something a lot of people attend on a regular basis, but no, we'll come back to it, but we have a few things to do in, in, in between.
I move the board approve those items listed on the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Does any board member wish to remove an item?
Yes, I'd like to remove the personnel report so that our Human Resource Director and Superintendent can talk about our new appointment in human resources.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I remove that?
We have to-
Do the consent agenda first.
Yep.
All right, any other items? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Can discuss the-
Absolutely. So I'll start and then I know Amy's going to put in a few words, but this was really her hire, probably one of the first things that she's done as acting, is future superintendent. But I will start by saying that leaving my position, as you know, is emotional and difficult because I'm concerned about how things would go move going forward. And so I was thrilled when Amy was named the next superintendent. I know she has the skills and the mindset and the passion to do a great job and I was equally thrilled when Brian Cool was named the HR Director because of his personality and care for people, his focus on doing this right for all people, employees and students make him additionally, are equally suited for his new role. So I feel a sense of relief knowing that Amy will be the next superintendent and Brian will be the next HR Director. I think you're in great hands.
As usual, it's hard to follow that, right? He takes all my word, so good evening, school board members. Yes, we are very excited to have Brian Cool join our team here at the district office and our cabinet team. You know, Brian brings a great passion for, for kids and for staff members, just for people in general. But when you walk into Brian's office right now at Hempstead High School, above his door, it says, "What's best for kids." And so when he makes decisions, he makes those decisions because it's best for the kids and the students of the Dubuque May School District. So I feel blessed to have Brian joining our, our team and I'm excited for your new adventure, for sure. So welcome, Brian.
I move that the Board of Education approve the personnel report as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the personnel report as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So that brings us to the Facilities and Support Services Committee Report from Ms. Whitman.
Okay. As we know, Amy Hawkins is very busy in HR before she takes her new role. So she was working through some employee agreements with seven bargaining units and Amy will talk about four of them that she's been working on recently.
So yes, we've been very busy working with our, our seven union groups to come up with agreements for the following school year. We've been fortunate to finish three of those with our teachers' union, our custodial group and our maintenance employees. And so all of those have been agreed upon at the percentage that you had set forth at the 3.01%. So we're excited about that. We were also able to do some, some things for our union groups this year that we hadn't done in the past. We looked at ways that we could give them the gift of time. We looked at personal leave, family illness leave, bereavement leave and some of those things that were, were inconsistent throughout the bargaining units that we had and we really made those equitable across the board. So I feel really good about that and that we were able to come to those agreements with the leadership teams that we have here in the district. So very excited to say we're finished with three. We have tentative agreements with the other four, so we'll be bringing those to you for the next meeting to, for your approval. So thank you.
Thanks, Amy. We also received updates on our building facilities. Mark Fassbender, I'd like to point one of them out. With the senior high school, there's a change order to the auditorium stage area needed redesign on some beams and a catwalk extension for stage as well as other items that will increase the cost by $34,591.55. We also received updates from Nick Rettenberger and Kevin, or Mark, sorry, with Hempstead School intercom replacement, the central kitchen mechanical system replacement, Hempstead High School kitchen freezer replacement and the Roosevelt roof replacement. Synergistics gave us some update on our energy savings and some highlights from there was a one-year savings of $204,962 in avoidance costs and $213,991 in two years. They presented the committee with a year-to-date recognition for a 17% energy use reduction and a cost avoidance of $1,105,822. So all our, the ideas and the staff helping us has, has been reducing our energy costs and that'll continue to get better. Kevin Kelleher already updated us here tonight. He, with the Certificate of Excellence and, what are we doing?
After the motions.
And then we have an update from Kevin with the Pebble and the Saye Projects. We also had Fulton Elementary Superintendent Riegens presented the committee with why Fulton was chosen to be closed. He cited steadily declining enrollment and the decreased amount of state aid along with the decrease in districts' unspent balance. He assured us all staff members that Fulton will have an opportunity to be placed in jobs within the districts and students at Fulton will be moved to-
I'm going to go through that PowerPoint.
You're going to go through it, okay. Stan's going to go through all that and then he also updated us on consolidation of the middle schools and we'll be starting to form committees to talk about that, too. And that's all I have.
So make the motions.
Oh, and motions, okay. First motion, I move the Board of Education approve the agreement with the custodial employees as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the custodial employees as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the agreement with the maintenance employees as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the maintenance employees as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Dubuque Education Association Teachers, Counselors and Nurses as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Dubuque Education Association Teachers, Counselors and Nurses as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve change order number two to Tricon Construction Group on the senior high school Phase Two project at the increased amount of $34,591.55.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number two to Tricon Construction Group on the senior high school Phase Two project in the increased amount of $34,591.55. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
And I move the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget Are you coming to talk to us again, Kevin? Awesome.
At least it won't be much quicker. So quarterly, I come in to you and talk to you a little bit about the budget, where we stand. So tonight, just three little quick topics. On page seventy-seven of your packet, you'll see the general fund expenditures. Current expenditures right now with looking at encumbrances for salaries and benefits are slightly lower than projections. So hopefully that will lead to a little better unspent balance at the end of the year than we currently thought it would be. So that's good news. General fund revenues, those are right in line with where we projected, so again, stable income. And then the last one on page eighty-four, the nutrition fund, this is really good news. With what the national legislature did in allowing and paying for free meals, breakfast and lunch for all students, that has really increased our number of students participating in the program. So our revenue from the nutrition fund is up considerably than it has been in prior years. So there's limitations on what we can do with that revenue, but our intent is to move forward with our capital replacement items in the nutrition fund, things that are allowable to be purchased. We have a lot of outdated equipment that in prior years, we weren't able to purchase new because we didn't have the dollars available. With this funding source now, we are going to accelerate our plan, it was a four-year plan, on replacing a lot of our nutrition fund equipment. It was old and outdated. So we're going to use those dollars to kind of help accelerate that and get us up to date on modern equipment, make us more efficient, which will help save us even more energy. That's all my comments. Thank you.
So Kevin, when you say revenue is up, that is because the more kids eating-
Correct.
And the federal reimbursement increases with that.
Right. Because obviously if it's free, it's not going to- For the program, they increase the reimbursement, but the participation is really up because it's, everyone has, doesn't have to pay for their, their meals like they did in the past. So that has really increased our participation, which is driving up that revenue.
Is that reimbursement account, its expiration date at all or is that-
June thirtieth. It was a special reimbursement rate that was created for this year. Hopefully next year, we'll see what they do. They've also talked about eliminating the program, but now they're receiving additional pressure that they want to keep the program going for all students. So we'll see what the future brings, but hopefully, knock on wood, they'll continue at least the free meals for all students part.
There is federal legislation that is receiving, well, we understand bipartisan support, so the possibility that will happen is, is, it's a very real possibility. Good.
And that really helps all students.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any discussion about the quarterly budget report? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And we have one non-action item under this part of the agenda, which is to present the IASPO, the ASBO, ASBO International Certificate of Excellence to Rick Till. So Rick's-
Oh, it's him. Did I make a comment first?
Of course.
First, first of all-
I'm going to go to the mic. So we can all hear you, Rick?
Sure. First of all, my name shouldn't be associated with, because we are a team, we have Kevin and Lisa Denver in the back and without all of us, you know, we would never get this award. So we do have one excellent staff here and I'm very proud to be working with all of them, so I would like to make that comment. And also Sarah Fob, who typed the report and proved it to help us get this award. So we, we are very lucky to have what we do at this district.
My understanding that this is the thirteenth year that we've received this recognition and I know I can speak for my fellow board members that we appreciate all of the work that goes into making sure that we are reporting our finances accurately and in a good position, even if sometimes we get a little confused about what everyone's talking about. At least I do. Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Whitman, for that summary of the meeting. And next we'll move to the Educational Programs and Policy Committee Report with Ms. Bradley.
Thank you. For those who don't know, there are two committees of the board. Ms. Whitman just reported on the Facilities and Support Services. I'm reporting on the second, which is the Educational Programs and Policy Committee. And that's where a whole bunch of our work happens, actually. So when you see us up here doing lots of barely discussion, lots of voting and things move along pretty quickly, that's because a great deal of time is spent at the committee meeting level where that's all hashed through and lots of good discussion. So we invite you to join us at those. They're at four o'clock on the first and second Mondays of each month, however-
Monday and Tuesday.
Or Monday and Tuesday, yes. However, in a moment, I'll suggest that we need to delay our Educational Programs Committee meeting a bit, but we'll get to that. So just briefly, there are two parts to the Ed Programs and Policy Committee and Programs and Policy. And so during the Ed Programs part, the board members hear from different district staff members who bring us information and sometimes requests for those things that need to come before the board for consideration and information. So I'll just quickly go through those. The first is that the, we know that Tammy Dear and Lisa Tobacorst have worked mightily with a group, large group of teachers and other staff members and parents and community folks to adopt a new elementary language arts curriculum for implementation in the fall. That's the Houghton Mifflin Heart Court Program. It looks like an excellent program. We're very pleased with that. And so what came to us this time was not that recommendation, but rather some additional purchase of materials that are needed so that all of our teachers and all of our administrators have access, both for those who serve in the general education program and then Brenda Duvall brought us information of her- And then Brenda Duvall brought us information of requests for some additional special education materials and accesses that will be needed. So the board was very pleased to hear about those things being considered in that purchase. Secondly, we were thrilled with the announcement when Julie Lang shared with us that our application as a district to provide online services to students in grade six through twelve was indeed approved by the state. And so we now will have the distinction of joining a relatively small number of those across the state districts who actually will provide online services in teaching and learning for students who prefer that format for their learning. So in place of, in-person format, we have about two-hundred-and-fifty students, as I understand it, currently in that program. And we expect that number to be about the same going forward. And we were pleased to hear that students in grades six through twelve will continue to have that option. It'll be first for our students who wish to have that as a preferred learning format. And then if space is available, it will be available to those who have additional interest outside of the district.
And good news is, even at this early stage, not even officially approved until tonight, we do have, have received a number of contacts from non-district students about attending our online school, which is good news based on the conversation we had earlier with declining enrollment. One weapon against declining enrollment is to continue to diversify the educational, you know, how we can deliver education and online school is leader amongst that. So and before this year, we had thirty-five, thirty-seven students who would leave the district for online school pre-COVID. And so can we bring those students back? Are there other students in the community or for their way in the state of Iowa who are looking for an online experience? Ours will be fantastic. And so potentially growth for student enrollment based on, which helps the overall budget as a whole, so.
Great. Well, it's quite an addition to our program. And we're very pleased, pleased to hear that it was, the state accreditation has been given now. That will not be for elementary, it will be for grade six or twelve going forward. The last thing that we heard in the first part of our meeting was a request from Superintendent Riegens about excusing seniors from making their snow days since the makeup would occur after they graduated. So I'll, I'll be back in a moment with a motion regarding that. Second part of the meeting, the policy portion. We looked at three ongoing policies as a part of our five-year cycle of review of policies. And they were policies regarding parent conferences, elementary class size, and academic letters. No changes were recommended by Superintendent and his staff. And none were made at the board level, so those continue as they have been. After that, our President Kate Dr. Parks brought forward two possible resolutions for the board's consideration. One of those, a resolution opposing state consideration of vouchers will come forward shortly in our meeting for consideration by the board. And lastly, Amy Hawkins, our Human Resources Person, Chief Operating Officer, announced that they would be, she would be moving forward with her selection of her replacement. We know now that that is Brian Cool, so we were, we didn't know that at the time, so pleased to hear that. So if I might, I will make a motion that the Board of Education excuse seniors from making up canceled school days. This is something that's available to the board to do on an annual basis and we support that.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded that the Board of Education excuse seniors from making up canceled school days. Is there any discussion?
They'll be happy again.
They'll be happy, everyone's happy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations, seniors. And teachers of seniors, hopefully as well.
As a former high school teacher, I can guarantee you having graduated seniors in class for three or four days is less than ideal.
That would be a constant.
So now we move ourselves to.
Just one last thing, if I might, and that is to say that we, the Educational Programs and Policy Committee will need to modify its historic starting time of four o'clock on the first Tuesday of the month. Now we'll be starting at four-thirty to accommodate our newest members' work schedule.
So come visit at four-thirty if you want to join that committee or hear what we're talking about.
That's right.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley.
Sure.
So that moves us to new business.
I'm gonna stand up here just so I can see the screens a little better. And hopefully this will work. Looking around the room, I believe every single person in here has seen this presentation before. So I will go at a relatively quick pace. But that doesn't mean that if board members have questions, we can't stop and go back. And can you hear me in the microphone? Hopefully this is gonna work for me. All right. So how did we get to this point? And there are, sorry, it's a lot delayed there, I might have skipped two. There are a lot of factors in play here for a decision and a recommendation that none of us want to make, but really are in a position where we have to do something of significance for the budget, for the school district, for the continuation of the very programming positions that we all want for our kids, the class size, that sort of thing. So we started these conversations two years ago. And it may not seem like that, but we started it in January of 2020 with the idea of continuing it in the spring. And then, of course, in March thirteenth, we shut down for three months and dealt with COVID. Last year, we had the hybrid. And so we were really dealing with COVID-specific issues until this past January, where we still discussing mask potential in January, February, this year. So that, COVID was not the time we received federal funding to really keep consistency available. So we did take a significant pause for COVID. We received the ESSR funds, those will run out. So it's the depletion of the ESSR funds, our projected enrollment. You saw how there were peaks and valleys in the, in our enrollment. And then the last several years, it has dropped off dramatically. So it puts us somewhat in, part of what puts us in that position. And we also saw an opportunity based on the number of folks who have retired or left the district in another way across all job categories to be able to retain an entire staff, which was really a priority. Those of us who were here twelve years ago, fourteen years ago, when we laid off one-hundred-and-ten people, have no desire to ever repeat those days. That was the worst possible scenario for our students and, of course, our staff. What are the financial considerations? Kevin went through those a lot. He explained the different funnels or buckets or silos, whatever word you want to choose. But we have an operating fund that is limited based on the amount we can spend per student. And that number is set at the state level. So being down five-hundred-and-thirteen students since 2015 with a projected decline in enrollment next year based on the kids that we know of in four-year-old preschool and other areas, you know, we're in a position where if you do the math, we spend about, we have spending authority of about seventy-four-hundred dollars per student. Five-hundred-and-thirteen students have left the district. So you're, you're in a significant financial hardship at that point to maintain what, what current program looks like. So the options really are to look at efficiencies. And so it is to reduce numbers of sections in buildings, go to larger class sizes, two-section schools, becoming one-section schools, that sort of thing. Or to be, look at efficiencies through the number of facilities. We didn't start with Fulton in mind. I appreciate the passion for Fulton. I've known Chris my entire career here. I know that Fulton is a fantastic school that's good for kids. But we had to have some criteria that was neutral and that we could apply to all of our, all of our facilities. So what were enrollment trends? In-district transfer? Importantly, building capacity. You know, what room is there for expansion? The age of the building, air conditioning, other building needs, capacity for displaced students to be absorbed in contiguous buildings, location-related other schools, those are kind of tied together, staffing considerations. And then the other consideration, is there a way to turn a building from what it currently is into something else that could potentially be more efficient? So when we go to this data, you see the projected enrollment for our elementary schools. The high schools were kind of off the table from the beginning because we have two and going to one is just really not likely. I mean, that we would have a thirty, well over three-thousand student high school scenario. So really, the high schools were off the table, the middle schools, we'll talk about later. So that's why we looked here at our elementary schools. And you'll see a thirty-two percent decrease in enrollment at Fulton, Audubon at eleven percent, Marshall eleven percent. But you see that, that number there, again, we've shared these slides. We also looked at capacity, so not only the square footage of the current building, but the square footage of the green space. Is there room there for an addition? Once again, Fulton lands on the, on the small end as far as additional space. It was just built in a time where, you know, Fulton, Marshall, Lincoln, Bryant, all the WPA era buildings, very similar in size and nature and on the land that was, was built on. Considered contiguous school districts, and so would there be room to absorb students in the surrounding schools without putting students on? I, somebody made the comment about making sure that families and students could get to co-curricular, extracurricular events, to, to music, to whatever, open houses, parent-teacher conferences. So we did try to look at what is the closest possibility for, for any of our students. But even that being said, I think that is a fantastic point. And we have spoken with transportation about how do we make that happen? We can't leave these kids hanging before, after school, or even just the safety to school. And though we are not required to provide busing inside the two-mile radius, we did add the, the late bus today or whatever has a better name than that, and that has been impactful. So I do urge that we continue to look at how do we move students to and from school, even if they're inside the two-mile radius, even if it's, because it's a safety factor. We do that at Table Mountain, we have a request at Sageville, Fulton's no different. So you can see Fulton is pretty well ringed there by a number of other elementary schools and is somewhat unique in that, in that capacity. Current staffing, three-point-two, almost three-point-three million dollars for staffing. And then some electrical, natural gas, water, sewer, then, you know, pretty minimal. But if you do the math for the, the funding we receive to run Fulton School and you compare that to the cost of running the school, it runs at about a one-point-two, one-point-three million dollar deficit. It's not the only school that runs at a deficit, it runs at the largest deficit based on student enrollment and declining enrollment. We expect that to be worse. So eventually, that has to be taken as part of the consideration. Staffing considerations, Amy and team have been hard at work. We'll meet with staff, I believe, tomorrow if this is approved, to begin the process of seeing what are those positions and letting staff choose positions based on seniority. We will also begin to tell families, this is where you're placed based on the new boundaries. But if you choose to in-district transfer to another building, we'll make that possibility, we're opening that, that, I used to say transfer portal, stuck in my head because I paid too much attention to college football. But to be able to, to transfer if they wish. And one of the biggest things that we hear is, I want to know where the teachers are going before I make that choice. And I, I can't think of a better compliment to you as a staff than parents who say, please don't close my school, but if you do, let me know where my teacher's going because we want to go where they're going, or my principal. So we'll make that happen to the extent that we can. Class size is another question that comes up often from parents. We did have a meeting with parents last week. I can't remember if it was Tuesday or Wednesday night. But, so that is the class size policy that the board sets. It's been setting this policy for quite a number of years. So you see those numbers there. It is a significant range, fifteen to twenty-three, nineteen to twenty-six, twenty-three to twenty-nine. And we do try to differentiate those class sizes based on the relative need of the students, the amount of at-riskness. And certainly the title funding allows us to do that differently in buildings that are identified as title buildings. So we are presenting a plan that would move the existing students at Fulton. Those who are transferred in, go back to their home schools. The remaining students who live within that boundary to attend Audubon, Prescott, and Eisenhower. Again, with some choice for the families to say, oh, there's a reason we hadn't been, you know, we just wanted one of the other schools, not the ones that we landed in. You'll see that this year, Audubon is at two-hundred-and-forty-three students, our projected enrollment next year's two-hundred-and-eighteen. And by this change, it would go to two-sixty-one. Prescott, you can follow those same numbers, two-forty-seven, two-twelve, three-fifteen, Eisenhower. I did talk with the Audubon principal and Ed tells me the largest they've ever been is three-thirty, and that was pretty rough. So we tried to keep it, the enrollment increased below, significantly below its historical high. Prescott has been as high as three-eighteen, so this even, in a very small way, is below its historic high. And then Eisenhower has fluctuated, it's probably been as high as six-hundred. So there's room there as well. So it's unfortunate that there is room for our students. It's unfortunate that we're in a scenario where we can absorb an entire elementary school without a single, you know, without having to change the infrastructure or do an addition onto our buildings. But it's just the signs, there are fewer kids in Dubuque, fewer kids in Dubuque. We have to find a way to regrow our clientele. So class sizes here at Audubon. So what you see is this year, 2021, and the projection for 22, 23, the red numbers is where a section would be added to keep those class sizes in the same ballpark that they are currently. Okay? A question came to me today, well, what about late registration? What about kids who move in? We have a history of adding elementary sections really as late as Labor Day. So should that become an issue, we will add sections to accommodate class sizes for our kids. So certainly don't want to do that after Labor Day, but we've done it that late before. So if needed, that, I'm sure that will happen again. Prescott has the largest change. It's, it's got the physical space, so you'll see many, all except for kindergarten will go to three sections again to maintain the small class sizes, actually smaller than they are this year. And in most cases, maybe every case, smaller than they were this year also at Fulton. Eisenhower is the same across the board there. And that's really the data that I pulled from our previous meeting with the parents and with the, with the board. Certainly we'd be open to answering other questions the board may have. I will stay, well, I'll stay one more time. I hope I started with this. This has nothing to do with the quality of Fulton. As you've heard, Fulton's a fantastic place, it has been. We will find a way to honor Fulton historically, whether it's something here or time capsule there, variety of things. We know we have a PTO president who will be more than happy to help us with that. And quite frankly, we'll, sure and sure we do that. We also have, after today, beginning tomorrow, we'll reach out with other community partners to figure out how Fulton becomes a viable community asset. You've heard me say from the very beginning, there are no intention of shuttering, you know, the windows and letting the grass grow. It needs to, it's a beautiful building, it needs to maintain its, its place in the life of the Fulton neighborhood. And there's a variety of ways that can happen. But certainly, starting with the playground for the summer, that's, that's a great request.
So overall class, kind of for everybody, class size change is gonna take place. In your mind, Stan, is it big? Is it?
No, it's the same. That's, that's the data I shared here, that those class sizes will stay the same and in some cases, be smaller. Now, if there are late enrollments, and I won't be here, but I mean, I've had that conversation, there will need to be an additional section added to maintain those class sizes. But the class sizes, because of our declining enrollment, we can do that and keep our class sizes the same.
Can these slides be available on our website?
Sure.
People who want to see them?
Yeah, Mike will post those.
Because I think one of the, there's much information here that I think will, in spite of the tragedy of this situation financially, there is much reassurance embedded in, in the information here.
It's really, what puts us in this situation is relatively low supplemental state aids. In other words, how much we can spend more next year per student than last year. Two-and-a-half percent versus seven percent inflation. Declining student enrollment's the biggest, you know, that is hitting us the hardest. You know, five-hundred-plus students next year will be closer to six-hundred students. You know, and the. and the inflation piece. But we'll absolutely post these slides.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education close and decommission Fulton Elementary School following the conclusion of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
Before we?
We can go into discussion.
At this or?
We have to second it. You get a second?
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education close and decommission Fulton Elementary School following the conclusion of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start off because I feel I have a personal connection with all our buildings. But I won't forget the first school that invited me over when I got elected. So I'm going to be very careful with my words because last time I had a soft spot that hit me and the people in the room. So let me say, I appreciate the teachers, the administrators, the janitors, that when I walked through that door, you made me feel like a million bucks. I'll never forget when I first walked in the building and I was talking with the administrator and I asked, have you ever seen a school board person before? I was like, nah. I was like, well, if you did, what would you say to them? They're like, oh, they would never listen to me. I said, well, if you did see one, what would you say to them? What would you want? They said, you know what? I just want them to visit. And Chris was right next to me. She started laughing. She said, here's a school board member, all right? And ever since then, you guys invited me multiple times throughout the year. The amount of kids that I see throughout the community that say, hey, you're that guy, the mister, I can and I will, right? We've been doing neighborhoods cleanups together. I won't forget that. I appreciate you guys not only investing inside the building, but outside in the larger community to show people that, hey, it does take a community to educate a child, build a family. I'm excited to hear that the school connector will make sure that whatever happens next, will visit every single student to make sure not only the student is okay, but also the family. So I'm encouraged by that, that we will take care of the students and also the teachers. I recognize no matter what we say or do, there's a lot of feelings that you're you're going to be experiencing. And so I'm also encouraged that there's support systems for the teacher. Chris, last week, you told the parents at the meeting that, hey, we have a plan. No matter what, I'm a planner, and we're going to make sure that we put a process in place to help every single family. I'm encouraged by that. And I also want to remind every single teacher in here, an administrator or parent, and this is something we say to the kids after we read a book to them. If you guys remember, I can and I will. And I always say, teachers, remember this. The reason why students say they can and they will is because of you. And so no matter where you go, there's going to be more kids that believe they can because of you. And so again, this is nothing personal. We have a responsibility to do what's best with taxpayers' money. But again, thank you for all that you've done, not only for this district, but for me personally. And I can't wait to continue to connect with you wherever you go. So again, thank you so much for who you are and what you've done for this district.
I had the privilege of being in the classroom many times with student teachers at Fulton. And I saw firsthand the the co-teaching that went on at Fulton, which is phenomenal. And after listening to some of the teachers speak and knowing that they're they're passionate for it, I hope that they take the experience that they have learned at Fulton and be leaders in the new buildings that you're going to because you know what works. You know what works for kids that you have had experience with. And I hope you look at that as an opportunity to share the success that you have learned at Fulton because it's amazing what you guys do there. And again, Anderson said it so well. It's not, and Stan said it, it's not because of Fulton itself that we have to do this. It's because we are responsible to look at the whole district. And I think we were all surprised when it came down to it as we look at, if you just look at the numbers and took out any any names, we were all surprised that, you know, as to what school it was. And I know the passion that is there and and you will continue to have a core forever because you guys are, it's a special group. I know that that's what happens with a school. The school might not be the same, but you will all still be together in some way or another as you go somewhere else in the district. But be leaders with the success that you've learned at Fulton.
I'd just like to comment that, again, like everybody said, no reflection upon the staff. You guys show that you guys work well together. We know what's best for kids. And that's what we want in our district. And like Tammy said, follow through with that to your next assignment, wherever that may be. I was very happy to see that there's a guaranteed job for all of our teachers, all of our employees at Audubon School. So with the change that's taking place right now in teacher applicants, et cetera, so I'm glad our our hiring freeze took place so that we'll be able to accommodate these folks. It's a difficult decision. It's already been mentioned. But we have to be good stewards of our taxpayers' funds. And we have to just be good stewards of our dollars. And so unfortunately, like a lot of things in life, this comes down to dollars. It's no reflection about any quality of your teaching, your staff, et cetera. But we wish you the best in your new positions.
I guess I'd like to comment. It really hit hard when you were talking about Fulton being your home. Our hope is that the staff, the students, the families find that new home and that it is a good fit for you. And you can talk as passionately about the next school in a year from now. So we really wish you the best and appreciate you all coming here tonight.
I would just add to what's already been said that as a person who worked in the district for a very long time, I had the privilege of working with Chris and her incredible staff and to get to know some of the families, not as many as I thought I would have liked. But what happens at Fulton is as extraordinary as our guest speakers have referred to tonight. It is a very special place. That quality of teaching, that quality of exceptional student learning outcomes doesn't just happen. It happens because each and every person functions individually at top level. And it happens because they function as a team at that top level. And the extraordinariness of that place cannot be over-exaggerated. Therefore, it is heartbreaking to think that the budget, as has been said many times, is is what this comes down to. And I just take this opportunity to say Iowa has dropped to thirty-ninth in the nation in funding to public education. Shame on us. That is not okay. That means Iowa is functioning with funding to public education in the bottom quarter of the states in the United States. How reprehensible. So to those of you at Fulton, I can, I say a personal thank you having seen you at work over many years, having been able to be with you in in some good times and some hard times. But what happens there is truly extraordinary. And so I, this is just a sad moment in the history of this district. And you've heard how many things are being done to try to make this as right as it can be. It can't be right. It can be more right than less right. But we can't make Fulton again. Fulton is what Fulton is. And it has earned its incredible reputation that you speak of tonight. So as a part of a board that has to to look at the realities of the budget and and all of that, I can only say a personal apology, if you will, for the kinds of decisions that have to be made to to keep us as a district moving forward. And the things you've heard that our superintendent and others refer to in terms of the kind of care and keeping that is going in to try to make this transition as good as it can be for everybody, that's not going to stop. And you hold the keys in a lot of ways and and your colleagues who aren't here tonight and are watching or will. You'll you'll come up with some ideas. Ms. Brumare, I saw it in an email. Thank you for your your many emails of of questions and considerations. That's that's important. There's there's a whole lot to think about in a decision like this and in activating and implementing a decision. So you'll come up with some other things that we need to hear from you about. So don't don't hesitate in that regard. This needs to be all it can be for the kids, for the staff, for the families, for the neighborhood. This is all in all a huge loss. So that's by the way of saying thank you for for all that you do and all the the incredible right things you do within for kids.
I echo what my board colleagues have said. And, you know, Stan said to us last week that, and I'm stealing your words, so I apologize, sort of. But we would have been doing something wrong as a district if this wasn't the kind of feelings that you had about losing this place and this home. And hearing your words and seeing how you feel about it is inspirational to me. And I just want to say thank you for all the work that you've done for the community and for the kids. And I just know that you'll keep doing it. There's no way that you won't. So that's all I have to say. But thank you so much. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Really, we're all opposed.
We're really opposed.
Next, I move the Board of Education approve a goal to have the district move to a two-middle-school model by the fall of twenty twenty-six with a focus on creating feeder schools to the district's two high schools. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve a goal to have the district move to a two-middle-school model by fall twenty twenty-six with a focus on creating feeder schools to the district's two high schools. Is there any discussion?
So maybe just quick on my end. So this is really part two or step two of our earlier conversation. The middle schools represent the same declining enrollment that our elementaries do. And we need to look at how we can best serve students by having two middle schools. It, if you look at Roosevelt and then you look at Washington and Jefferson, Washington Jeff educated the same number of students as Roosevelt. It costs us three and a half million dollars more to run the two middle schools than one. So the thought being to be far more in advance of this because there will be a new building needed or at least a major reconstruction to an existing building to house middle schools. The reason for the feeder schools is, you know, currently Hempstead and Senior have boundaries that have been in place for twelve or fourteen years that really create mirror images of each other. So it's not a proposal to investigate moving Washington and Jefferson together. It is to take the students who would be going to Hempstead, which is a combination of all three schools, and put them in one building. And then the second building be a combination of all the students going to Senior in another building so that those students be together from sixth grade through graduation. So just wanted to put out there the idea of setting a goal. There's a lot of work to be done. Committee needs to be organized in the near future of of teachers, administrators, board members, parents, community members to figure the what, where, when, and how is a lot more complex than than when you can just move elementary students. We do fortunately, through our saved dollars, have money where we can do construction. So again, goes back to Kevin's presentation. People would ask, how could you build or renovate and put an addition onto a middle school? And then talk about it's because we have money in the renovation fund or in the building fund, not in our operational expense. So knowing it's going to take a year or two of planning and then a year or two of some type of construction, wanting to start those wheels rolling now because with the historically low SSA that we've had for the past decade, those dollars are going to continue to diminish compared to inflation. And if student enrollment continues, we just have to be more efficient.
I concur with that recommendation. And then we have feeder schools for our for our middle schools, for our high schools. I also kind of want to think down the road here. I know it's not a done deal as far as new school remodeling, and that's been.
Yeah, I think that's what the committee has to wrestle with.
Committee will come up with. And I think that we have to look, though, at the long range way down the road. We don't affect the ability of future boards to use any saved funds down way down, down at the end of the road. So I think that we, that's not, that's not one of the things that's redid. Our goal here tonight is just to say, get the get the works in motion. I do want to make that point.
There'll be lots of approvals that have to be made by the board in the coming years about this project.
It is, yeah.
Any other discussion?
Just the maybe a recapping of the projected savings of going from three to two, so people know.
I didn't bring that slide, Mike. Do you have that in a way you could pull up easily? It's about three and a half million dollars per year of operating expense. So the goal with the elementary school is a million dollars. The goal with the middle schools is three and a half million dollars. Might be a little bit more than that. Well, depends on the project. So you're talking about four and a half, five million dollars every year in the operating expense. Those are the dollars that we hire staff with. So we are in a competitive market. Sorry, I'm standing up. We're in a competitive market. I have a brother who's a superintendent. We were together celebrating a birthday over the weekend and, you know, looking at what others are offering salaries-wise. You know, we have to be competitive or we won't be able to have teachers. We have to look at programming. And so the the district has to become more efficient so that we can pay our employees better to keep them, whether they be paraprofessionals or bus drivers or teachers or administrators. That has to happen or we're not going to be able to recruit new or retain the ones we currently have. And then there's the issue of programming. And then, of course, there's the, we have to flatten off our budget because you cannot get to a zero or deficit spending. That's illegal. So there's the projection. Again, you see the highlighted number. Is that three point eight? I'm sorry, I think I said three point five. So about three point eight million dollars. And that's probably, those are Kevin's numbers, which means they're incredibly conservative. So that number is likely a little higher than that. And again, it just compares Jeff and Wash from a student enrollment standpoint. It's not to suggest the recommendation is to combine Wash and Jeff. It's to follow our high school boundaries for as attendance centers for our middle schools.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Just just a comment if I if I might about the timeline on that. I'm willing to obviously to support that timeline by fall of twenty twenty-six. But should it be possible to arrive at that for the fall of twenty twenty-five, as urgent as our budget situation appears to be as we go forward, that would be a desirable modification to that to that portion.
Absolutely. I believe it said no later than.
It does.
So that is clearly an end date. If it can be done sooner based on the decision of what project, where, that kind of thing, I would agree a hundred percent.
So more will come on that. We have one last motion.
I move the Board of Education approve the resolution opposing any litigation or other similar effect to create a voucher program in Iowa that would divert money intended for public education to private entities.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve a resolution that would oppose, sorry, a resolution opposing any legislation or other similar effort to create a voucher program in Iowa that would divert money intended for public education to private entities. Is there any discussion?
I think just to kind of summarize it all, public taxpayer dollars for public schools.
Any other comments? That there's still, you know, possibility of of this legislation coming through in this session? And so we felt it was important to register our position that public money should be spent in public education. And so that's what this is meant to do.
Just just a comment that current, already, a great deal of public money goes to private education entities. And this would be a considerable additional direction in that regard. And in terms of our responsibility as a board, I believe it is to, to take a stand about this and to, to speak strongly about how devastating it could be for public education in our state if a voucher system goes through.
If I could, I would add one comment. Ms. Bradley mentioned earlier that Iowa is now 39th or 40th in per student spending. When I started in, in Dubuque 18 years ago, we were 29th. So we have dropped 10 or 11 spots. In other words, 10 or 11 other states now spend more per student than when 18 years ago was the case, when we were pretty close to middle of the road. So we are trending the wrong direction fairly quickly.
This would not help that.
And this would not help that.
Well, I think parents, for those who are watching and those who are in the building today, the advocacy doesn't stop just right here. Each and every single one of us, we, we play a role. So as you meet with your legislators, you know, ask them where they stand on this, right? Because if we continue to defund, that's what it is, the public education, it will continue to have an impact on workforce. It will have an impact on our ability to educate the future workforce. And for me personally, those who will get hit the hardest are poor and minority students, right? And so let's not defund, let's continue to invest in education so we have the best student throughout the country. And so again, the advocacy doesn't stop here. Each and every single one of us, we should demand from our legislators that you invest in education so we can have a, a real good education system.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. So we're at board member administrative issues. Anything not on the agenda that we need to talk about?
No administrative issues.
Okay. All right, seeing none, we are adjourned.